So we'll go ahead and open the Planning Commission at 6:30 on March 21st, 2024. And we'll rise for the Pledge of Allegiance. All right, so I'll go over to Diane for a roll call of our Commissioners.
Anding Commissioner Jamie Malcher.
I'm here.
Anding Commissioner Henry Walthius. Anding Commissioner Laura Wood.
Here.
Uh, Commission Chair Jeffrey Parker.
Here.
Anding Commissioner Eva Journey.
Present.
Anding Commissioner Nancy White.
Present.
Thank you.
All right, so this portion in our public hearing, if anyone is here to address the Planning Commission on anything that is not on the agenda for this evening, this would be the time. It's from March 7th. Anybody have any corrections or addendums that need to be made?
I would make a motion to approve the Planning Commission meeting minutes of March 7th, 2024, as presented.
Have a motion, do we have a second?
A second.
We have a second, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? All right, moving on. So, these are both continuations, is that correct? No, it's a new one, yes. Oh, the 23, conditional use is new. All right, so we're gonna go ahead and open the public hearing for CU 23-03 at 6:32. So the applicant is requesting a conditional use permit to construct an 840 square foot shed for storage, firewood, and lawn equipment. The application is, excuse me, applicant is applying for a conditional use permit for Sweet Home Municipal Code, Chapter 17.10.040I, secondary use on a lot without a primary use, so no primary residence. Tax Lot 142 contains approximately 11,250 square feet and is in the residential low-density R1 zone. All right, so with that being read in, the applicable substantive criteria are listed in the staff report. Testimony, arguments, and evidence must be directed toward the criteria described or other criteria in the plan or land use regulation, which the person believes to apply to the decision. Failure to raise an issue accompanied by statements or evidence sufficient to afford the decision-maker and the parties an opportunity, oh, excuse me, an opportunity to respond to the issue precludes the appeal to the Land Use Board of Appeals based on that issue. With that being read in, do any of our Commissioners have any personal bias against this application?
No.
I have none, any conflicts of interest?
No.
I have none, any ex parte information?
No.
I have none as well. So at this time, we will go over for our staff report.
Thank you. The applicant CU 23-03 is requesting a conditional use permit to construct an 840 square foot shed for storage, firewood, and lawn equipment. The applicant is applying for a conditional use per Sweet Home Municipal Code, Chapter 17. Point 10.040I, secondary use on a lot without a primary use. Tax Lot 142 contains approximately 11,250 square feet and is in the residential low-density R1 zone. Okay. We'll go down to flood plain based on a review of the FEMA Flood Insurance Rate Map, Panel 41043-C0914G dated September 29, 2010. The subject property is not in the special flood hazard area. Based on a review of the City of Sweet Home Local Wetlands Inventory and a review of the National Wetlands Inventory map, the subject property does not contain inventoried wetlands. The subject property has frontage and access off Cal Maya Street. The subject property has access to city water and sewer services in Cal Maya Street. I'll go down to decision criteria 17.104.050. A conditional use shall be approved if the applicant provides supporting evidence that all the requirements of this development code relative to the proposed use are satisfied and demonstrates that the proposed use also satisfies the following criteria. The use is listed as a conditional use in the underlying district and complies with the development's requirements of the underlying zone. Staff findings, the subject property is in the R1 zone. The applicant has requested to construct a shed for storage, firewood, and lawn equipment. The applicant is applying for a conditional use per Sweet Home Municipal Code, Chapter 17.10.040I, secondary use on a lot without a primary use. Based on the above information, staff find the application complies with this criteria. B, the characteristics of the site are suitable for the proposed use considering size, shape, location, topography, and location of improvements and natural features. Staff findings, tax lot 142 is an approximately 11,250 square foot vacant lot. The proposed 840 square foot shed will cover approximately 7% of the lot. The front of the shed is more than 70 feet from the street, abutting this front yard, and is therefore permitted to be built within five feet of the rear and interior side lot lines. The proposed rear setback is approximately six feet. The proposed eastern side setback is approximately 14 feet. The proposed western side setback is approximately 15 feet. The front setback is approximately 105 feet. There are no topographical or natural features in the location of the proposed shed. Staff find that the site is suitable for the proposed use. Based on the above information, staff find that the application complies with these criteria. C, the proposed development is timely considering the adequacy of transportation systems, public facilities, and services existing or planned for the area affected by the use. Staff findings, staff finds that the proposed shed is timely. The property abuts Cal Maya Street and shall allow for adequate transportation needs to the facility. There are no residential dwellings proposed with this application. However, there are city water and sewer services available in Cal Maya Street should there be future development. Based on the above information, staff find that the application complies with these criteria. D, the proposed use will not alter the character of the surrounding area in a manner which substantially limits, impairs, or precludes the use of surrounding properties for the primary uses listed in the underlying zone. Staff findings, all abutting properties are in the residential low-density R1 zone. The proposed shed is proposed to be located at the rear of the lot. The proposed use will not alter the character of the surrounding area. Based on the above information, staff find that the application complies with this criteria. E, any negative impacts of the proposed use on adjacent properties and on the public can be mitigated through application of other code standards or other reasonable conditions of approval that include but are not limited to those listed in this chapter. Staff findings, staff has not identified any negative impacts to adjacent properties to ensure compliance with the standards listed in the Sweet Home Municipal Code. Staff has included proposed conditions of approval that are listed in Section 4 of this report. With the above information, staff finds that the application complies with this criteria. I will skip through the optional conditions of approval to C, or B, sorry. The uses existing prior to the effective date of this chapter and classified title 70 as a conditional use shall meet the criteria for modification of approved plans and developments. C, the Planning Commission may require the applicant of an approved conditional use permit to enter into an agreement with the city for public facility improvements. Staff findings, this provision of the Sweet Home Municipal Code allows the Planning Commission to impose conditions of approval. This is an opportunity for the Planning Commission to determine if conditions are needed to ensure compliance with the decision criteria as well as the best interest of the surrounding properties, the neighborhood, and the city as a whole. To ensure compliance with the standards listed in the Sweet Home Municipal Code, staff has included proposed conditions of approval listed in Section 4 of this report. These conditions are primarily a customized list of existing local, state, and federal standards that apply to this application. For conclusion and recommendation, if the Planning Commission approves this application, staff recommends that the conditions of approval listed below be required in order to ensure that the application is consistent with the findings and the review and decision criteria, Section 3, and is required by the Sweet Home Municipal Code and other provisions of law. Appeals to the Land Use Board of Appeals may only be based on review and decision criteria contained in Section 3. Recommended conditions of approval for CU 23-03. One, the final configuration, the proposed shed shall substantially conform to the plot plan reviewed in this application. Two, a new right-of-way permit and hard surface approach will be required. Three, the property owner shall obtain and comply with all applicable local, state, and federal permits and requirements. The applicant shall submit copies of all required permits and licenses to the Sweet Home Community and Economic Development Department for inclusion in the record of CU 23-03. Five, Planning Commission action, in acting on a conditional use permit application, the Planning Commission will hold a public hearing at which it may approve, either approve or deny the application. If the application is denied, the action must be based on the applicable review and decision criteria. If approved, the Planning Commission may impose conditions of approval. Staff's recommended conditions are included in Section 4. Appeal period pursuant to ORS 227.175, the Planning Commission may establish an appeal period of not less than 12 days from the date the written notice of the Planning Commission's decision is mailed. Staff's recommendation is that the Planning Commission's decision is, on this matter, be subject to a 12-day appeal period from the date that the notice of decision is mailed. Order, after the Planning Commission decides, staff recommends that the Planning Commission direct staff to prepare an order that is signed by the chairperson of the Planning Commission. The order would memorialize the decision and provide the official list of conditions, if any, that apply to the approval if the application is approved. Motion, after opening the public hearing and receiving testimony, the Planning Commission's options include the following. One, move to approve the application CU 23-03, which includes adopting the findings of fact listed in the staff report and the conditions of approval listed in Section 4 of the staff report, the setting of a 12-day appeal period from the date of the mailing of the decision, and hereby direct staff to prepare an order to be signed by the chair to memorialize this decision. Two, move to deny applications CU 23-03, which includes adopting the findings of facts, including the setting of a 12-day appeal period from the date of mailing of this decision, and hereby direct staff to prepare an order to be signed by the chair to memorialize this decision. Three, move to continue the public hearing to a date and time certain or for other.
Say, I'm just glad it's you that, better than me that has to rebound up. I would have stumbled through it much more difficultly, difficultly, see, that's a new word, there you go. All right, so at this time, do we have our applicant in the room? For this conditional use? Do you not?
I don't think that we do, but I did email both applicants before the meeting.
Okay. So, I have a question for staff. On the application, he's listed his or their address as the actual property address and not like where they currently live. Does that matter?
He has property on both, so he lives, he has a deed that is for the property in question as well as the address that he lives at.
Okay.
Which is right next door to the west.
My only concern was that there is no primary residence on it, so he's using this as an address, even though it's not. All right, so we do not have our applicant, does anybody have any questions for staff? All right, so we will close the public hearing. Oh, yes, I guess I do. I guess I just made an assumption why they are here. Does anybody have any testimony in regards to this application? Any opponent testimony, those in favor? Any opponent testimony, those wishing to speak against? Any neutral testimony, those wishing to speak, not in favor or against, but just wishing to be heard? All right, as there are none, we will close the public hearing at 6:43 for discussion amongst the Planning Commission. Anybody have any concerns or comments?
So the applicant does have a residence adjacent to this property?
Correct, to the west.
And is he planning to build a home on this property? Why isn't he consolidating it so that he can have this use outright permitted?
That I do not know, I just know that he has a house to the west and that he wishes to build a structure on the vacant parcel, so. It wasn't specified in the application.
This is not unusual. We often have had applications like this where there is a reluctance to combine the properties simply to keep their options open for the future. In this case, leaving them separate does leave it an asset that could be sold relatively easily, but that's all just speculation, we don't have any information from the applicant about their future plans.
Well, he did, they did give us a little bit of information in the application. There, his answers to some of the questions allude to a plan to build a home on that property. Yeah, like when house is finished, it will meet and comply with all city codes and standards. And that there, so I think it seems as though there is a plan to keep the lot separate and eventually to build, although that's not what it's, and it makes sense to me that you'd want to have a place where you could store your building materials and things like that while you're, if you're going to be doing, taking on that project. It's adjacent, so they'll be caring for the property. But that's the only, he alluded, they alluded to the fact that there is a plan to build a house on that property.
So we've approved requests like this in the past, so there's a precedent.
Yeah, and the nice thing is, the position of this proposed structure is in a location that does not make it unbuildable for future structures or residents.
Yeah.
But we're not giving him permission to build a house.
Correct. We are only looking at placement of the proposed shed in front of us.
Saying he can put a shed on there, even though there's no house.
And the only reason there's a conditional use is because there isn't a primary structure. Otherwise, this wouldn't even be coming in front of you.
Yes. All right, so if there's no other further discussion or questions for staff, we look for a motion. Move or deny the application.
The application CU 23-03, which includes adopting the findings of fact listed in the staff report and the conditions of approval listed in Section 4 of the staff report, the setting of the 12-day appeal period from the date of the mailing of the decision, hereby direct staff to prepare an order, signed by the chair to memorialize this decision.
A second, that?
Okay, we have a motion and a second, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? All right. Moving right along.
Jeff, can I draw a little technical to the staff? On the first page where we have property location, I wonder if in the future we could put an address on there. It gives you Assessor's map number but no address.
I think part of it is the fact that the address is not assigned until a permit has been issued, is that correct?
It depends on the property. There are some vacant lots that don't have an address yet because they haven't been developed. In this case, this one had a home at one point and it had an assigned address, I believe. But we can, we can take a look and see what we can do to make that.
Had to go looking into the applicant papers to find the address. Just, okay, kind of subject noted.
Good point. All right. I haven't stepped on one there.
Yeah.
Still have that one there. I still have a previous one in here that, that's not on the agenda for tonight. Cummins.
Oh, that is the one, that's our, that's the next one.
That's SD 2201, and we're looking at 2301. So.
I don't see the paperwork for that one in our binder.
Yeah. Okay, and then there's no cover sheet for the section for tonight.
Yeah, we don't have our.
It's in there somewhere. No, you're fine.
No, so I have here stick on top because these is.
Correct.
Oh, there it is.
Gotcha, all right.
It's behind. Behind some of these new maps that they gave us.
All right.
Nice. That's the agenda.
I might be too far back. Sorry, we just want to get our ducks in a row.
There was a motion.
There was?
Yeah, you were tech.
Okay, I missed it.
It was unanimous in favor.
Okay. Sorry about that. Okay.
All right, everybody good? We're gonna go ahead and open the public hearing for SD 2301 at 6:50. Right, so do we want to go ahead and read it all back into, or are we gonna as is?
No, because a couple of you were missing, I think. I'm gonna go ahead and try to whip through the staff report again really quickly, and then I will review the comments from the applicant that I received as reply to that meeting, and then we'll move forward from there. So, just to let you know, this may be my last staff report. So, Henry, you might only have to listen to my speed one more time.
We'll treasure it.
I don't know if you can hear though, because these are not.
Is it turned up in the back?
Yeah, it is, I don't know.
Oh.
So, so I will speak as loudly as I possibly can.
All right, so we will officially pass it over to.
Want to read your bias stuff?
Yeah, I can go ahead, I didn't know if you wanted me to base on that or not.
Yeah.
All right, so I'll read the hearing disclosure statement as well. The applicable substantive criteria are listed in the staff report. Testimony, arguments, and evidence must be directed toward the criteria described or other criteria in the plan or land use regulation, which the person believes to apply to the decision. Failure to raise an issue accompanied by statements or evidence sufficient to afford the decision-makers and parties the opportunity to respond to the issue precludes the appeal to the Land Use Board of Appeals based on that issue. Do any of our Commissioners have any personal bias against this application?
No.
I have none. Any conflicts of interest?
No.
I have none, any ex parte information?
No.
I have none, all right, so to Angela for possibly her last staff report.
The application under consideration is proposed tentative subdivision plat. The proposed subdivision will be completed in four phases and include 157 residential lots, three stormwater tracts. Subdivision approval is reliant on the property line adjustment application being filed concurrently. The subject properties are located east of 43rd Avenue, north and east of Coulter Lane, the southernmost end of 45th Avenue, and the southernmost end of 46th Avenue, and is identified by the Lynn County Tax Assessor's Map as 13S01E33D, tax lots 283502. The subject property is a residential low-density zone. Based on the review of the FEMA Flood Plane Insurance Map, Panel 41043C0914G and 41043C0918G dated September 29, 2010, the subject properties are not in the special flood hazard area. The subject property does show wetlands and waterways on the property depicted on the Sweet Home Local Wetlands Inventory map, SSR-2, SSR-3, SSR-3A, SSR-3C, SSR-3-D, SSR-3E, and SSR-3H. Per the Department of State Lands Wetland and Water Wetland Land Use Notification Response on December 28, 2023, the project has a concurred wetland delineation, WD 2023-0092. This delineation identified extensive wetlands on-site, a permit and associated mitigation are required. Proposed parcel one has access from 43rd Avenue and Coulter Lane. Proposed parcel two shall have access via road system proposed with subdivision application, SD 23-01, applied for simultaneously. There are city water and sewer services in 43rd Avenue, Coulter Lane, and 46th Avenue. There are three stormwater channels abutting and one running north to south on proposed parcel one. There are two stormwater channels abutting and four running north to south on proposed parcel two. Minimum lot area shall conform to the requirements of the zoning district in which the parcel is located. Access easements or the access strip to a flag lot shall not be included in the calculation of a lot area for purposes of determining compliance with any minimum lot size provision of this development code. Findings, the staff, or the subject lots are zoned residential low-density. The minimum lot area for R1 zone is 7,000 square feet. Based on the submitted site plans, the proposed lot sizes shall range in size from approximately 7,029 square feet to approximately 28,907 square feet. Based on the findings, staff finds that the application complies with this criteria. Lot, the depth of lot or parcel shall not be more than three times the width. Lot or parcels created for commercial, industrial, or public uses shall be exempt from width-to-depth ratio provisions. Based on the submitted site plans, no depth of lot or parcel exceeds three times the width of the parcel. Based on the above findings, staff finds the application complies with these criteria. All new lots or parcels shall access a public street except that residential lots or parcels may be accessed via private access easement developed in accordance with the provisions of Chapter 17.42, when it is determined that a public street access is, one, infeasible due to parcel shape, terrain, or location of existing structures; two, unnecessary to provide for future development of adjoining property; three, no more than 10% of the lot within the subdivision may be accessed by a private street or private access easement. Based on the submitted site plans, all new lots or parcels shall have access or shall access a public street. No lot within the subdivision is accessed via private street and private access easement. Based on the findings, staff finds the application complies with this criteria. Flag lot shall be subject to the following development standards. The access strip shall be a minimum 20 feet in width. The improved surface shall be a minimum 14 feet in width. The access strip shall not be included in the lot area calculation. If the length of the access strip exceeds 150 feet, the parcel or lot shall include a turnaround area per applicable fire district requirements. The applicant is not proposing a flag lot. Through lots, through lots shall be avoided except where essential to provide separation of residential development from traffic arteries, adjacent non-residential activities, or to overcome specific disadvantages of topography. Screening or buffering pursuant to the provisions of Chapter 17.54 may be required during the review of the land division request. Based on the submitted site plans, applicant has proposed one through lot, lot number 14, in phase four. There's proposed fire turnaround, a hammerhead at the rear of lot 14 along C Street, making the front of lot 14 along B Street. The side lot lines, as far as practical, shall run at right angles to the public street, private street or private access easement upon which the lot or parcel faces. As depicted in Attachment B, the proposed parcels would have sidelines that are at or very close to right angles of the public street. Based on findings, staff finds the application complies with these criteria. Utility easements shall be provided on the lot areas where necessary to accommodate public utilities. Easement width shall conform to adopted engineering standards. Based on the submitted site plans, the applicant has proposed public utilities to be located in the public right-of-way and utility easements throughout the subdivision. See Attachment B exhibits F through F9. The length, width, and shape of the blocks shall be designed with regard to providing adequate building sites for use contemplated, consideration of needs for convenient access, circulation control, and safety of street traffic, including pedestrian and bicyclists, and recognition of limitations and opportunities of topography. Findings, the subject lots are zoned residential low-density R1. The minimum lot area in the R1 zone is 7,000 square feet. Based on the submitted site plan, the proposed lot sizes shall range in size from approximately 7,029 square feet to approximately 28,907 square feet. The lot sizes provide adequate building sites for single-family dwellings and duplexes. Based on the submitted site plans, the applicant has proposed local street widths of 40 feet for A Street, 45 feet for B Street, C Street, D Street, 45th Avenue, 44th Avenue, 45th Avenue, 46th Avenue. The existing Coulter Lane is 40 feet. The applicant has proposed a seven-foot sidewalk and curb width for pedestrian traffic. Staff finds that the length, width, and shape of the blocks provide adequate building sites, and the applicant considered safe pedestrian and bicycle traffic, convenient access, and traffic circulation. Based on the findings, staff finds that the above, that the application complies with these criteria. Blocks shall not exceed 1,000 feet in between street lines with a preferred length of 500 feet. Exceptions are permitted for blocks adjacent to arterial streets or if the previous development pattern or topographical conditions justify a greater length. The recommended minimum distance between Collector Street intersections with arterial streets is 1,800 feet. Based on the submitted site plan, the length of the subdivision blocks ranges from approximately 371 feet to approximately 567 feet. The width of the subdivision blocks range from approximately 82 feet to approximately 200 feet. Based on the findings, staff find that the application complies with these criteria. The subdivisions shall be laid out to provide safe, convenient, and direct. and direct vehicle, bicycle, and pedestrian access to nearby residential areas, neighborhood activity centers, such as schools and parks, shopping areas, and employment centers, and provide safe, convenient, and direct traffic circulation. At a minimum, nearby means the distance from the subdivision boundary, quarter-mile for pedestrians and one mile for bicyclists. Per the KED Engineering Comments in Section Two, the development will require traffic impact study. An increase of three hundred trips is the threshold at which a study is required, considering all phases of development. Average daily trips would increase by a minimum of approximately one thousand four hundred and eighty. Connectivity to achieve the objective in C, traffic circulation above, the city may require the following: stub-in streets, where the potential exists for additional residential development on adjacent property. The city may require reserve strips and street plugs to preserve the objective of street extensions. Accessways, public accessways, to provide a safe, efficient, and direct connection to the cul-de-sac streets, to pass through oddly-shaped or blocks longer than six hundred feet, to provide for network of public paths, creating access to nearby residential areas, neighborhood activity centers, shopping areas, and employment centers. Findings, per the KED Engineering Comments in Section Two, a one-foot-wide reserve strip should be dedicated to the city at the end of each incomplete street, and all hammerhead-style fire department turnarounds should be constructed as temporary measures. It appears that this applies to exhibit E dash two, east end of A Street, B Street, C Street, D Street, and Coulter Lane. Any additional hammerheads that are being put in place until the subsequent phase of street constructions is initiated, as indicated in the plan. All streets that will not be extended in a subsequent phase of construction should end with a cul-de-sac as opposed to a hammerhead. The streets that were identified as streets that will not be extended in a subsequent phase of construction are as described: the eastern end of C Street, the eastern end of A Street, the eastern end of Coulter Lane, and the southern end of Forty-sixth Avenue. Collector and arterial connections, accessway, bikeway, or sidewalk connections with adjoining arterial and collector streets shall be provided if any portion of the site's arterial or collector street frontage is over six hundred feet from either a subdivision access street or accessway. The placement of an accessway may be modified or eliminated if natural features, such as adverse topography streams, wetlands, preclude such a connection. Based on the submitted site plan, A Street, C Street, and Coulter Lane will connect to Forty-third Avenue. Forty-fourth Avenue extends from A Street to Coulter Street or Coulter Lane. Forty-fifth Avenue and Forty-sixth Avenue will be extended from north property boundary to D Street. The applicant has proposed a seven-foot-wide curb and sidewalks throughout the subdivision design. Design standards: pedestrian, bicycle accessways shall meet the following design standards: minimum dedicated width of ten feet, minimum improved width of eight feet, and the accessway shall be designed to prohibit vehicle traffic. No pedestrian or bicycle accessway are shown on the submitted site plans. Improvements. The following improvements shall be required for all subdivisions. Frontage improvements, I'm just gonna whip through and go to the, because there's a lot of these. So, where am I? Frontage improvements, project streets, monuments, surface drainage, and stormwater systems, sanitary sewer, water systems, sidewalks, streetlights, street signs, and other requirements. Completion of improvements, sorry, there's a ton of these. Oh, and completion of improvement, sorry. So, staff findings, per the KED Engineering Comments on Section Two above, the development will require traffic impact study. An increase of three hundred trips is a threshold at which a study is required, considering all phases of development. Average daily trips would increase by a minimum of approximately one thousand four hundred and eighty. A one-foot-wide reserve strip should be dedicated to the city at the end of each incomplete street, and all hammerhead-style fire department turnarounds should be constructed as temporary measures. It appears that this applies to exhibit E two, east end of A Street, B Street, C Street, D Street, and Coulter Lane. Any additional hammerheads that are being put in place until a subsequent phase of street construction is initiated, as indicated in the plan. All streets that will not be extended in a subsequent phase of construction should end with a cul-de-sac as opposed to a hammerhead. The streets that were identified as streets that will not be extended in subsequent phase of construction are described: eastern end of C Street, eastern end of A Street, eastern end of Coulter Lane, and southern end of Forty-sixth Avenue. Streetlights will need to be installed at appropriate locations. All new streetlights and subdivisions shall be aluminum material with an anchor pier. The light fixture itself shall be a LED luminaire and shall conform to the Oregon PUC rules. Public, per the Public Works Engineering Comments in Section Two, the waterline of Forty-third Avenue will allow the proposed tie-in shown in the design. The waterline entering the subdivision from the Forty-third Avenue, sixteen-inch water main tap will need to be an eight-inch C nine-hundred PVC line. The eight-inch PVC water serving the subdivision will need to be looped and tied back into our existing eight-inch ductile iron water main on Forty-sixth Avenue. The design calls for a sanitary sewer tie-in on Forty-third Avenue into an existing ten-inch line. However, the existing sewer line on Forty-third Avenue is only an eight-inch concrete line. The design also shows the existing sewer on Coulter Lane being a six-inch concrete line, and it is an eight-inch concrete line. The existing sewer line size on Coulter Lane will be sufficient, but the Forty-third Avenue eight-inch line will need to be upsized to a ten-inch thirty, forty PVC from the A Street tie-in north to Long Street, where it will tie into our existing twelve-inch line. Where subdivision stormwater system outlets into the Forty-third Avenue ditch, we would need to see an engineered stormwater development report that shows pre- and post-development runoff rates to ensure the existing Forty-third Avenue ditch has appropriate capacity. Staff shall recommend a condition of approval that the applicant comply with all improvement requirements listed in Sweet Home Municipal Code seventeen point five eight point zero six zero. Submental requirements: all applications submitted on forms provided by the city along with appropriate fee, it shall be the applicant's responsibility to submit complete, I'm gonna skip through this part because we already know that they did that, listing all of those. Staff findings, the applicant submitted application SD twenty-three dash zero-one on December twelfth, twenty-two-three. Staff deemed the application complete on December twentieth, twenty-two-three. Conclusion and recommendation: based on the findings discussed in Section Three above, stack recommends that the application be approved. The application shall be subject to a compliance with the conditions listed above. As required by the findings of fact presented in the review criteria above, any modification to the conditions listed below would require approval in accordance with provisions of law, such as variance, subsequent land use application, etc. If the planning commission approves this application, staff recommends that the conditions of approval listed below be required in order to ensue, ensure, excuse me, that the application is consistent with the findings in the review and design criteria, and as required by Sweet Home Municipal Code and other provisions of law. Appeals to the Land Board, Land Use Board of Appeals, may only be based on review and design criteria listed above. Recommended conditions, if the application is approved: one, the final configuration, the proposed lot shall substantially conform to the plot plan reviewed in this application. Phase one includes forty-one residential lots and one storm tract. Phase two includes forty-three residential lots and one storm tract. Phase three includes forty-six residential and two stormwater tracks. Phase four includes twenty-seven residential lots. The subject properties are north of Coulter Lane, east of Forty-third Avenue, south of Forty-Fifth Avenue, and south of Forty-sixth Avenue. The subject properties are identified on the Lynn County Tax Assessor's Map as thirteen S zero one E thirty-three D, tax lots twenty-eight hundred and thirty-five oh two. Lot sizes shall range in size from approximately seven thousand twenty-nine square feet to approximately twenty-eight thousand nine hundred and seven square feet. All lots shall be eligible to be developed with single-family dwellings or duplexes, per Sweet Home Municipal Code seventeen point one zero point zero two zero A and B. Subject properties are in the residential low-density R-one zone. Two, the applicant shall comply with all requirements identified by the KED Engineering and Public Works Engineering Department. Comments in Section Two above, the applicant shall comply with all storm drainage and grading requirements in Sweet Home Municipal Code seventeen point four six. The applicant shall comply with all utility lines and facility requirements in Sweet Home Municipal Code seventeen point four eight. The applicant shall comply with all street standard requirements in Sweet Home Municipal Code seventeen point four two. The new property line shall be situated so that all buildings and structures comply with the yard setback requirements of the residential low-density R-one zone. In addition to engineering standards, improvements installed by the developer for any land division, either as a requirement of these regulations or the developer's option, shall conform to the requirements of this development code. The improvement standards and specifications adopted by the city and shall be installed in accordance with the following procedures: A, city approval required. Improvement work shall not commence until plans are approved by the city. All plans shall be prepared in accordance with the recommendations, the requirements of the city. Notification: improvement shall not commence until the city has been notified in advance, and if work has been discontinued for any reason, it shall not be resumed until the city has been notified. C, inspections: improvements shall be constructed under the inspection and the satisfaction of the Public Works Director or designee. The city may require changes in the typical street sections and improvements if unusual conditions arise during construction to warrant such changes. The installation of utilities, all underground utilities, sanitary sewer, and storm drains installed by the developers shall be constructed prior to the surfacing of the streets. Stubbs for service connections for underground utilities and sanitary sewers shall be placed to a length eliminating the necessity for disturbing the street improvements when service connections are made. E, as-built drawings, a plan or map showing all public improvement as-built, shall be filed with the Department of Public Works upon completion of the improvements per Sweet Home Municipal Code seventeen point five eight point zero seven zero. Eight, within the two years of the final decision, the final approved plat or first phase shall be recorded with the county. If the phase, first phase final plat is not recorded within two years, the preliminary approval shall lapse, and a new application shall be required. All phases of an approved plat shall be recorded within ten years of the final date of the decision, per Sweet Home Municipal Code seventeen point one one zero point eight, zero eight zero A. And the effective date for the final plat approval, the approval process for the development shall become final upon the recording of the approved final plat, together with any required documents with the county. Approved final plat shall become void one year after final city approval if they are not recorded, per Sweet Home Municipal Code seventeen point one one zero point zero eight zero G. Ten, the applicant shall obtain all applicable development permits, which include but are not limited to public works permits, development permits, including building permits, and erosion control permits. The applicant shall obtain a twelve-hundred C stormwater permit from the Oregon Department of Environmental Quality, and any Department of State land permits as applicable. Planning Commission Action. In taking action on a subdivision, the planning commission will hold a public hearing at which it may either approve or deny the application. The decision on the application must be based on the applicable review and decision criteria. If approved, the planning commission, conditions of approval, oh, planning, skip words, may impose conditions of approval. Staff's recommended conditions are included in Section Four. Appeal Period: staff recommends that the planning commission's decision on this matter be subject to a twelve-day appeal period from the date of the notice that the decision is mailed. Order after the planning commission makes a decision, staff recommends that the planning commission direct staff to prepare an order that is signed by the chairperson of the planning commission. The order will memorialize the decision and provide the official list of conditions, if any, that apply to the approval. If the application is approved: Motion, after opening the public hearing and receiving testimony, the planning commission's options include the following: one, move to approve application SD twenty-three dash zero-one, including the conditions of approval listed in Section Four of the staff report, adopting the findings of fact listed in Section Three of the staff report, the setting of a twelve-day appeal period from the date of the mailing of decision, and hereby direct staff to prepare an order to be signed by the chair to memorialize this decision. Two, move to deny application SD twenty-three dash zero-one, including adopting findings, the setting of a twelve-day appeal period from the date of the mailing of decision, and hereby direct staff to prepare an order to be signed by the chair to memorialize this decision. Three, move to continue the public hearing to a date in time certain, or four other. Of course, this has to be my last one. All right, now, onto the, onto the comments.
To that part. All right, so we received, after the last public hearing, we received comments back. There were questions posed by the planning commissioners and public comment, and the applicant provided some answers, which is in your paperwork under Devco, and I will just read through these really quick. In response to questions and concerns raised at the February first, twenty-twenty-four Planning Commission hearing for the Coulter subdivision application, we have prepared the following information as clarifications of the application materials submitted previously. As a starting point, we would like to reiterate what the staff report confirms. The application has been prepared in compliance with the applicable municipal code standards. The applicant is in agreement with the conditions of approval proposed in the staff report. Design Intent: beyond the basic intent of complying with the applicable municipal code provisions, the premise, premises of the proposed subdivision layout included: be an efficient use of the land, and thus reduce future pressures, pressure to expand the urban growth boundary, create walkable blocks, and minimize any lots isolated by dead and end pedestrian connections. Note, there are some anticipated pedestrian connectivity in phase four that was omitted from the application drawings. A condition of approval requiring such would be acceptable to the applicant. Maximize the number of lots along any given length of street frontage by utilizing minimum lot widths, so that the cost of the new public infrastructure is spread over many lots as possible, thus reducing the lot development costs and favorably impacting final home sale prices. Traffic Impact Study: a previously, as previously discussed, a TIS is not required with the subdivision application, but is a requirement for the final plat approval, and permit issuance for public infrastructure construction. The scope of work for the Phase One TIS would reasonably include the study items stated on the attached scope of services prepared by Clemo and Associates. Principal Chris Clemo, I could be pronouncing that wrong, was one of the members of the traffic engineering team who prepared the city's current transportation system master plan. Storm Drainage: the accompanying Exhibit J shows in concept how the drainage facility shown on the Exhibit F series drawings will function specifically with respect to the intercepting offside upslope surface drainage. These subdivision improvements will intercept a considerable amount of surface drainage that presently flows to the area south of Long Street between Forty-third and Forty-sixth Avenues. The intercepted stormwater will be detained in the surface storage areas indicated on the drawings, at least to existing drainage ways and roadside ditches as, at pre-development rates. The design of the system allows for release from the detention ponds as less than pre-development rates if needed in order to reduce any downslope drainage impacts. Wetlands: as has been acknowledged, there are some jurisdictional wetlands on the property. These wetlands are regulated by the Department of State Lands and the Army Corps of Engineers. The city relies on DSL and ACOE to provide wetland fill permits and requires proof of such permits along the design coordination of the permit conditions of approval prior to issuing any construction permits or final plat approval. Under the municipal code provisions, there are no special local protections applied to the wetlands on the applicant's property. The Phase One development as proposed does not have any wetland impacts. Phase Two development will require some wetland fill permitting. This phasing gives the applicant time to work through the DSL and ACOE permitting processes and make adjustments to Phase Two layout as may be required. Fire department turnarounds, be it a cul-de-sac or hammerhead, permanent or temporary, fire and life, fire and life safety access will be reviewed with the fire department during the design of public infrastructure and final plat preparation for each phase of the subdivision. Park: the applicant appreciates the potential value and benefit to a neighborhood that a park facility offers. The city's current park and recreation plan contemplates some trail connectivity in the Coulter subdivision area, but no parks. The pedestrian facilities, which will be constructed with the subdivision, will accommodate future trail connectivity. A park in this area would likely be classified as a mini-park, but its location and function should be coordinated with a community-wide process. The applicant will work with city staff to identify a park location to strategize funding mechanisms. As a starting point, we suggest considering the Phase Two lot highlighted in yellow on the following graphic as a mini-park. This location has good pedestrian access. The adjacent stormwater detention areas would provide opportunity for a landscaping backdrop, and in addition, this location is readily accessed by future development to the north along Forty-Fifth Avenue corridor. From the aerial perspective, these are considerable vacant lands along Forty-Fifth Avenue south of Long Street. Then there is the report from Clemo Associates in regards to the traffic impact analysis. Based on the correspondence with the City of Sweet Home staff, the following is impact analysis, TIA scope of work necessary to address Sweet Home Municipal Code requirements for the proposed Phase One of Coulter subdivision. Background information assumed based on the applicant-provided materials. Phase One of the Coulter subdivision is located east of Forty-third Avenue and north of Coulter Lane in Sweet Home, Oregon. The property is more specifically described as a portion of tax lot twenty-eight hundred in the Lynn County Assessor's Map thirteen S O one E thirty-three D. The total Coulter subdivision includes four phases with one hundred and fifty-seven residential lots. The subject Phase One includes forty-one single-family residential lots and associated roadways on the western portion of tax lot twenty-eight hundred with access to Forty-third Avenue and Coulter Lane. The proposed subdivision is consistent with the Sweet Home residential R-one zone designation. As such, a TIA is necessary to address Sweet Home Municipal Code requirements outlined in Section seventeen point four-two point one three zero. The following is the scope of work for Phase One, noting that if Phase One materially changes from the information presented above, the following scope of work may require, may require revision, accommodate future trail connectivity. Seeing a page. A park in this area would be. Oh, these might look, well, that's repeating it. I don't know why. These are in two different areas. Okay, let me go here. Sorry, losing all my papers. Transportation Analysis Scope of Work. Proposed Development: trip generation estimates shall be prepared using the Institute of Transportation Engineers I T E Trip Generation Manual, eleventh edition, and Practices from I T E Trip Generation Handbook, third edition. The trip distribution must be addressed both in the narrative as, and as a diagram in the study. Reasoning for the trip distribution must be included and based on existing count information or logical explanation of expected origins and destinations based on the residential use. The Phase One build-out year needs to be identified. The phase one build out year needs to be identified. It is assumed this phase will be complete prior to the construction of other Coulter subdivision phases. Existing and proposed development access location to the public roadway must be identified. The location of access points must consider the classification and design standards of the adjacent public roadways. Applicable agency access control requirements. Vision clearance, site distance, number of lanes, vehicle storage and queuing signage and striping and pedestrian and bicycle facilities. The study must cover the entire area of influence from the proposed development, including any intersections or accesses receiving thirty or more trips and any other items that need to be considered, such as nearby school zones or transportation projects. Based on the City of Sweet Home's review, this includes the Long Street Forty Third Avenue and Forty Third Avenue Coulter Lane intersection. Existing conditions. Review current agency transportation facility documents, including the Sweet Home Transportation System Plan and capital facility plan to identify any known transportation system system deficiencies. Provide a description and map of the existing conditions in the study areas, such as street classifications, speed limits, right away and pavement widths, bike lanes, planter strips, sidewalks, lane configurations, intersections, traffic control, bicycle and pedestrian facilities, schools and transit routes. A summary of existing pedestrian and bicycle facilities must be provided to document how the development will be served and any connectivity issues to existing facilities missing missing or substandard sections of sidewalk, including ADA ramps along the adjacent to the site must be identified. Crash data for the past five years and any other safety issues must be identified and evaluated within the study area for potential impacts to the study scenarios. Collision history must be analyzed to document if any existing safety conditions may be impacted or aggravated by the development or development mitigation. Traffic analysis. Analysis scenarios need to include the existing predevelopment conditions and the post development condition in the phase one build out year. The analysis period is the PM peak hour of the adjacent roadway system. Traffic count data shall be obtained within the last two years on a midweek day. Any traffic impacts resulting from nearby schools needs to be considered and accounted for. Background traffic growth rates shall be based on assumptions contained in Sweet Home T S P or as directed by agency staff. Identify include all in progress traffic from other developments in the project area. This information needs to be requested from and provided by the City of Sweet Home. Perform operations and queuing analysis at the Long Street Forty Third Avenue and Forty Third Avenue Coulter Lane intersections. Highway capacity manual methodology must be used for traffic analysis. For the operations analysis, the Sweet Home Mobility Target is Level of Service L O S D. For signalized intersections, the mobility target applies to the overall intersection and for unsignalized intersections, it is for all approach movements having to yield the right away. Queuing analysis must be must include both the average queue length of the ninety fifth percent off queue length. The ninety fifth percent off must be used for design and for determining the required storage for turn lanes. Conflict with queued vehicles must be addressed, such as street or driveway access accesses adjacent vehicle lanes, railroad tracks, et cetera. Applicable warrants for turn lanes and traffic signals must be identified. Where analysis shows a turn lane or signal may be needed, applicable warrants must be evaluated to justify the need. Site distance for new intersection streets and access points must meet Sweet Home Municipal Code requirements. Any deficiency in the site distance with the proposed development plan must be identified and discussed. The analysis must also address site distance to crosswalks and traffic control devices, such as proposed signals, stop signs and road signs. The tree planting plan must be reviewed for conflicts with proposed traffic control devices and signs. Potential mitigation. Any mitigation identified in the above analysis needs to be discussed if the TIA identifies safety concerns or L O S conditions less than minimal standard. Improvements and funding strategies must be considered concurrent with the development proposal. Any right of way requirements for mitigation all must be also must be identified. Mitigation for impacts must be done consistent with the approved phasing plan if the mitigation phasing is clearly identified in the TIA. TIA summary. The TIA needs to include a list of conclusions, recommendations and a summary of key findings. Any required improvements must be identified with the expected year for completion of mitigation. Any improvements that are not required for the development but are recommended to mitigate traffic issues in the study area must be identified for city consideration and transportation planning purposes. The above identified TIA scope of work has been prepared for phase one of the Coulter subdivision. If phase one material changes from the information presented above, the scope of work may require revision. If you have any questions about material, require additional information. And then additional maps were required highlighting their answers to their questions. I'm done.
Well done.
I think.
Oh, really quick. Any questions for staff before we invite our applicant forward?
I I have a couple. Um, is this is the original staff report that there was has been no updated findings or conditions of approval based upon the new information submitted?
No, all they did is clarify just some of what was in the staff report and then just the questions.
Okay, and then on the conditions of approval, it references the attachment B. And I'm not sure what attachment.
Attachment B is in your original packet, so it would have been the site plans. If you look at the bottom of your course, I missed this all up when I attachment B is the application narrative tentative subdivision maps and the wetland delineation report. So it's the all the original documents.
The whole application?
Yeah, the original.
Okay. And on the traffic impact analysis letter, they are proposing just the PM peak hour to to study?
I I don't know a lot about traffic impact studies, but yes, that's according to the engineers notes. Yes.
Okay.
That's when they're the most impact.
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, people go to work at different hours, but everybody tends to come home at the same time.
People want dinner.
Yeah. All right, at this time, if you have our applicant in the room, I would invite them to come forward. And if you could, after you've had a seat, if you could state your name and address for the record.
Good evening. Lyle Hutchins, a project planner for the applicant. Would also like to introduce Mark Cordell with Cordell Construction here this evening. And first of all, thank you for your patience on the hearing on February first. That was a very new experience for me, so.
So if if you could, if you could just give us kind of a very brief synopsis of the project proposed.
Tell you the truth, with Angela's very thorough presentation, I was going to just shut up and see if I could answer any questions.
All right, we we mainly just do it for the record, but we can refer back to Angela's spoken testimony, I guess. At point. All right. Does anybody have any questions for the applicant at this time?
So I have a quick question. I appreciate the new maps. I want to say thank you for sending them back, showing us your plan for water mitigation in the area. It helps me see more clearly what your plan is to help protect the other properties from absorbing any water from this new subdivision. I do have one question in phase one. I see that the water drainage in one portion of that phase is going towards the detention pond in that front corner. Yeah, and then the the other the other properties, I think they're like lot twenty five through like thirty three up in that top little corner. Though drainage right now just flows directly through those properties and isn't going to head in the corner of the detention pond. Can you just tell me what's the plan for the water mitigation on those properties?
You bet, and it's all very similar. I may have been confusing. The the black arrows basically represent the direction of existing ground slope flow, so to speak. But it was specifically with respect to phase one. The street and storm drain infrastructure that will be constructed with that will basically intercept that water and it'll be piped through the street systems down to the detention ponds. So generally speaking, regardless of the actual ground direction, the new public infrastructure improvements will intercept all that water and take it into the detention areas.
So it'll be captured by storm drainage that you that will be built in A Street?
Correct.
Okay.
Exactly.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Anybody else have any questions for our applicant?
I too am glad to see the detention ponds. And I know you've tried to address the drainage history.
Thank you. Yeah, I thought this maybe it really it's all in black and white in the original application, but it is hard to pick out all the details for as large of a piece of property as this is, so we tried to make it a little more presentable, if you will, as far as the graphics so that give a good presentation of what we were trying to do.
It's interesting with a project of this size that we as a commission are very, very dependent upon other agencies. Other engineering aspects will happen before construction begins. I don't, I don't think that we're going to sit here and try to be engineers.
It's
Whether it's engineering for stormwater or the transportation study, vehicular study. We're very dependent upon others. For those things.
And that is really pretty typical with development in general. But there are certainly highly qualified firms who deal with this on a regular basis and staff has the technical capability to review that information to make sure that it is following code requirements.
I appreciate the the design that you have here that includes that little pocket park or mini park in there and the mid block walkways. I think that park is going to be in a great location based on those and the vacant property that it's abutting. So I do appreciate that.
And you know, future phases may may be appropriate for another one also, so we're we're certainly willing to carry on those conversations.
Just a point of of information from staff perspective, one of the items that we're working on right now is an update to our park system master plan, and unfortunately, of course, development at this time doesn't have the benefit of that of that plan since it's not completed yet. One of the things that's been discussed is the the desperate need for parkland in the eastern part of the city. And so we will be working, we are in the process of both talking to current developments, potential other landowners and property owners looking for the right size property in the right place, and a lot of that is in flux right now. But I appreciate the willingness of of developers to to work with the city on that and find something that's both a benefit to the neighborhood of the future neighborhood and the existing neighborhood, as well as the the overall city.
Yeah, I do think there's a common thread amongst everyone here on the planning commission that we're trying to protect Sweet Home from becoming just this massive cookie cutter type community where we've got more addressed toward the pedestrian and specifically younger families and their their needs. So does anyone else have any questions for our applicant at this time?
I'm still on. One more clarification just for me on C Street and A Street. You know, ultimately after phase four, those are dead end roads, and that's because of the topography of the area, right? That goes into very steep slope where there wouldn't be able to be connectivity of the roads.
Yes. So this was our version. Angela already talked about cul-de-sacs versus hammerheads. We're in complete agreement with that as we move forward with whatever works best for the fire department. But this was kind of our initial thoughts with respect to if there was to be connectivity to the urban growth boundary and planning for some future. This particular street is basically pointed at some of the lesser grade areas here with where these contour lines are starting to get closer together, means it's just steeper and steeper, but this this particular kind of pointed at some of the areas that will potentially less slope up there and might be more readily developed, but I think as ultimately we get to phase four, that can certainly be revisited with respect to what's appropriate based on city needs of that.
Just to chime in on that also, that butts up right against our city limits and our urban growth boundary line. Urban growth boundaries are notoriously difficult to expand. And the city of Sweet Home is blessed with a lot of vacant property within our existing city limits and our existing urban growth boundary, thus making the justification for an expansion of that line decades away, if if even then. And so from the staff perspective, it is hard to imagine a time when a road will be feasible to to go up that hill. Either both physically feasible, but also feasible with the the regulations on growth that we currently have. And so unless something major changes between between now and when we when they get to phase four, we would, our, the staff recommendation would be for that to be a more of a bulk cul-de-sac because it's just super unlikely for that ever to connect.
Has there been any any discussion about Forty Fifth and Forty Sixth as they currently exist? Were those property owners, I'm sure they were notified. They're very inadequate streets that did end right now and obviously are going to be affected by this project.
Sure. So as I believe the Forty Sixth, there's a portion of that that is owned by the the developers, correct? By the applicant?
Forty Fifth, I believe. Or is it I have
The one that's furthest east.
Furthest east would be Forty Fifth.
Forty Sixth, right. So so that has potential for for upgrades, certainly. Forty Fifth is in other hands and not strictly under the the right of way does not to connect fully. And so the city would certainly be pursuing that, and that would be any any property in that area that is developed by other folks. That would be a condition of approval for for that development would be the dedication of additional right of way and and bringing that up to our street standards. But when it comes to what's already under control of the city and what's under the control of the applicant, that's what the traffics, the traffic impact study is really for is to identify those improvements that need to be made to bring those streets up to the level that they're needed to serve all of this development. So that's something we're keeping a close eye on and that we would be working with the applicant to ensure that those meet our transportation standards.
And just to also clarify. So as far as noticing people in the area for a subdivision, they are noticed three hundred feet from the entire boundary of the subdivision. So anyone within that three hundred feet got noticed of the subdivision. So just as a clarification.
If there are no further questions at this time for our applicant, oh. But hey, have you take a seat? Thank you so much.
Thank you.
And don't go anywhere. So at this time in our in our public hearing will be the time for opponent testimony, those wishing to speak in favor of the application. Keep in mind too, that if you're wishing to speak tonight, you need to fill out a public comment card and have it turned in to Diane or Angela. And we'll try and limit our time to three minutes apiece. So if there's anybody wishing So if there's anybody wishing to speak in favor of the application, this would be the time to do so. All right, opponent testimony, those wishing to speak in opposition of this application, this would be the time to do so. Oh, you want me to call him up? Okay. All right, I think it's Katie. And again, just for the record, after you have a seat, if you could state your name and address, thank you.
So I'm Katie Vineyard. I live at four three zero nine A Long Street in Sweet Home. I still have major concerns. Is it okay if I walk to that map to show you?
I I don't see why not, as soon as our tech savvy staff pop it up there.
And it just goes one way. There's like nowhere to really back out. I have a concern about this one being technically hammerhead because this could never go through as the properties are connected. And since this is CTC land, I don't see how it's ever going to be connected. And also this one, I understand it's on the other side, so technically yes, it's a hammerhead, but it's never going to be able to go through because the property comes together. Because if you go over the development right over this way, there's a hammerhead. In the evening time, there is absolutely no room for a fire truck. I would be very concerned if I lived in that area because I don't feel like there's room for a fire truck if there was a fire at my house. I'm very concerned about traffic as far as forty-fifth, because if you turn off of Long Street onto forty-fifth, there is not hardly enough room, especially for two full-size vehicles. The other concern that I have is the width of the road. If you go back, I don't even know what this, I don't even think this has a name to it right back there in the old airport is what I call it. But in the evening time, there's cars parked on both sides of the street, and I would assume that this is probably going to be similar. There is only room for one car to go through, whereas if you go to an older part of town, like up twenty-ninth, cars can be parked, there's still a sidewalk. So there's room for the pedestrians and then there's also room for the extra vehicles to still pass two by two when there's cars parked alongside the roads. And I I have concerns about these water retentions because I have a water retention behind my house that is not getting maintained. And to me, it's a drowning hazard for my children. You guys aren't putting anything up around these. And it's very concerning to me when I have a four-year-old and a six-year-old. And people will send kids to parks by themselves. I've been to the one off of twenty-ninth. There are small kids there. Like I understand wanting it to be beautiful and pretty and surrounded. But there's major concerns when there's children around. I guess that's all for this comment.
Okay.
Thank you.
All right, is this a question?
Is this, I'm just wondering if this is the retention pond that is was not functional and is now functional at this time?
So that's a different subdivision?
Okay.
And certainly I can, I can talk with anyone who's interested in
I know.
The existing, just a moment. With anyone who's interested in finding out the current state of that one, I can speak with them, but it's not something that's at issue for this meeting. It's not a land use issue, it's a city engineering and building code issue. And so we would take care of it through through those methods and meeting with staff. And if anyone is not satisfied, we're talking with me about it. They certainly are welcome to meet with the city manager or to bring their concerns to the city council, but there those are not land use issues for the planning commission to determine.
But it's also very concerning to me when that development went through this exact stain. And that has been a complete fight the whole time and still is. Because I know of a plumber in town that's been out and looked. I've been back there when he was there. There is a way to get all the water out of it. So to me, it's it's a huge issue.
Thank you for your time. I'd just like to remind everyone too, that we have certain guidelines and criteria that we can address as a planning commission. And that the most of these other comments are dealt with via the building portion and code compliance. So thank you for coming down. I appreciate it, Katie. Marilyn. And again, as before, if you could state your name and address for the record.
I can do that. Marilyn Nicholson, eleven ninety-seven Forty-third Avenue. And I have a few items for the commission to contemplate as they consider this application and any necessary plan adjustments. As was mentioned previously, there are storm drainage issues in the area north of Coulter subdivision. Okay, I'm going to repeat. There are storm drainage issues in the area north of the Coulter subdivision application. Okay. My questions are, does the city have a plan to address the current drainage issues on forty-third, forty-fifth and Long Street with respect to the current application? Does the city have a plan with respect to this application to address the additional stormwater drainage? And ensure that all development shall be planned, designed, constructed and maintained to provide a system by which water within the development will be controlled without causing damage or harm to the natural environment or to property or persons within the drainage basin. This is pursuant to Sweet Home Municipal Code, Chapter seventeen point four six, Storm Drainage and Grading. Seventeen point four six oh four oh, General Standards, Design Standards. Does the city have or has the commission considered the additional burden on the current water, sewer and stormwater infrastructure this development will require? Will the system development charges aid in development improvement as stated by Blair Larson previously? Or just adequately accommodate the development improvement? I would like the planning commission to be aware, if you aren't already, that the current access width at the south end of forty-fifth Avenue is currently not adequate for two-way traffic. Please see the Lynn County Records. And I would like to also address the commission that the stormwater tracks could be considered an attractive nuisance and then no persons in charge of any property shall permit such. And that is municipal code eight point oh four oh four oh, attractive nuisances. These could also be seen as standing water and present drowning hazards. This was also addressed in the July seventh meeting in in two thousand twenty-two. That's all I have at this time.
So much.
Thank you.
Michael.
And again, once you've had a seat, if you could state your name and address for the record.
Michael Doherty, forty-three oh seven Long Street.
I don't know if the mic will have heard you, so if you could do it one more time after you've seated.
Michael Doherty, four three zero seven Long Street. Okay, well, I'm not going to be as eloquently prepared as they were with these city code numbers. My my concern is that I face forty-third, face Long Street just down from forty-third. Rehash the same issue, the storm drain's inadequate the way it is. Several times this year, it's already been right up to the edge. If we add anything more to that, don't really need to be a hydrologist to figure out that it's not going to hold much more. And it says right here, it is going to spill into the ditch on forty-third. Is that, but that was a request from a study from Blake Patterson. Has that been addressed or looked at yet?
I can address questions from the planning commission, should they, but this is a public hearing.
Okay.
Time for you to voice it. If they want to know, they can ask me. Thank you. And I'm happy to meet with anybody after the meeting.
What was a engineering company? I'm just wondering, has this been? They brought items up for water, sewer and storm drain. And it says the subdivision's going to spill into forty-third Avenue ditch. I can tell you after almost twenty years living right there, it's not going to handle much more water. We're having an issue with the eighteen plot placed behind us already. So if we add a hundred and some odd more above it and everything's uphill, it just seems like that if that study hasn't been done, somebody really needs to be looking into that because it doesn't take an expert to figure that ditch isn't going to hold much more. And my only other concern is on the southeast corner here. Is there going to be a break between the property line and the forest? Because the way it shows it, those trees, their backyard's going to be right in the forest. What happens if that burns? Is there any way for the fire department or anybody to get back there to address that? Either direction, if the forest burns this way or something catches on fire there, either way, it's going to, those trees are there. They're not going anywhere unless they get burnt. I just wondered if there's proposal for a fire break there, so there's access in the event there's a fire.
Good point.
So my other concern was access to that thing, but the original showed one way in and one way out. Sweet Home has a lot of one-way-in, one-way-out places that seem to me should have never passed a fire code, but I see that there's more than one access, so. Think that's it.
Thank you so much for coming down. Appreciate it. Do we have anybody else wishing to speak tonight? Katie's got another question. Is that okay to bring her back up or is it?
Your meeting, but I I'm also happy to answer any of the commission's questions.
So may I have any quick questions for staff in regards to this? I know that some of it has to do with the ends of the streets, but we've already addressed the fact that most of these are going to be changed to cul-de-sacs at the at the end of phase four for the ones that are not no longer developable.
So so a couple of things on that. The the reason for the, the city has hammerhead cul-de-sacs that weren't put in place to connect with other streets and we're just kind of a way to cram in houses and
Right.
We don't allow that anymore. And then there are hammerheads that are put in place because there's a possibility of future street connectivity. When it comes to street A, possibly connecting over to forty-seventh Avenue, that is completely possible. Land ownership changes all the time, development proposals come in all the time, and the city has to look twenty, forty, sixty, eighty years into the future of what might be possible. And so certainly there's possible connections with those hammerhead cul-de-sacs. What the city would pursue is making sure we have adequate easements and and right of way to to make sure that that can happen. And so we would be seeking some some barriers so that structures couldn't be placed on those on those areas where where the streets might eventually go. So and then I've already commented on street C, that it seems highly unlikely that it would ever connect. But the other hammerheads, I think, are very possible to connect. The the reason for the hammerhead there is to make sure there's enough for a fire truck to turn around. And and so those are made with, according to the fire district's rules. Usually if there's enough room for a fire district, a fire truck to turn around, there's enough room for anything else to to turn around as well. Was there another question?
For staff, no?
So those hammerheads, it looks like they are easements on the adjacent properties. And will those be marked as no parking areas?
They need to be.
And then it would be an enforcement issue if people were parking
Exactly.
Vehicles or RVs or
Yep.
Okay. And then as far as the water spilling over into forty-third ditch. So right now, all of the water is heading down that way anyways. This development will stop and collect it.
Yeah, so stormwater throughout the city is 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 of course a concern. We recently had a stormwater master plan conducted that identified a lot of of needed infrastructure. And that if it hasn't been adopted already, it's soon to be adopted. And the the improvements that are identified in that stormwater master plan will be added to our capital capital improvements list that the system development charges pay for. And so we, it's, it, yes, we know that those roadside ditches on forty-third need to be deepened. We know that there are stormwater management issues in the city that need to be addressed with city infrastructure. And I'm not the public works director, but I can speak to the fact that these conversations are happening and that plans are being made to address all of those things. And so the great thing about a development like this is it happens in phases. And you you don't build houses overnight. So we do have fair warning on on the need and we adjust our plans accordingly to make sure that city infrastructure is meeting the needs of the over the the entire community, not just newly developed property, but existing properties and and the stormwater that they generate. So there, I know that we have plant, we have plans, we have projects identified in these exact places that that would be improved. Now, when it comes to this development and going into forty-third, there's, there's no way around that. The natural slope of the land is that that's where it goes. And and also anytime anybody develops their property, it's eventually we can require detention of a certain amount, but it, you know, eventually it does, the overflow, if there's a major, major storm event, it does go into the city system. And so we we keep an eye on that and we are are determined to ensure that the city infrastructure is adequate to to meet that that demand.
Could these detention pond areas or facilities alleviate?
Oh, certainly. So I mean, the way these are designed, the way these these detention basins are designed is that all of the onsite, all of the onsite drainage goes into those first and they are, they do have an overflow mechanism so that when they, when they are about to overflow, they go into the city system as a as a essentially a safety mechanism. But they're intended to to handle that first so that and and one of the requirements of stormwater, regardless of what size development you're putting in, you could be putting in a shed on your house or you could be putting in a hundred fifty-seven lots like this. The rule is the same. Pre-development stormwater, the level of pre-development stormwater can continue to flow off your property. But post-development stormwater, any increase in that has to be addressed onsite and has to to fit within the city system. So this is, this is a an issue that all sorts of developments have. We even have this issue with properties that are not being developed and people who have decided to fill in part of their yard or something like that. And we have to come in and enforce and say, I'm sorry, you're not allowed to change this ditch that was already in existence in your property because that causes flooding on your neighbor's property. You know, we we do enforce that on a regular basis.
Director Larson, can I interrupt? So if we don't have any more public comment, we need to close the hearing, disorder of operations, and then we can keep this discussion.
Okay.
Just trying to keep you all on in line.
All right. So are there any other individuals that wish to speak? Yeah, if Katie, if you can keep it to under three minutes, I'll allow you to come back up.
Do I need to say my name again?
Your name would be great.
Okay, so I'm Katie Vineyard. I guess another thing that I'm just wondering whether it can be changed at all is I understand that it's zoned R one. And the lot sizes fit that. However, this does not look like it fits in at all with the surrounding area of Sweet Home. So I don't know whether that's something that can be looked at as far as a rezoning or something different. But if there was less houses going in, I don't feel like there would be as much of a fight going back. Because these are tiny little properties with not a lot of room, especially for families. It's the only thing that I would like to be considered. Please, thank you.
Thank you. All right. So is there anybody in the audience that wishes to address with neutral testimony, not wishing to speak in favor or against, just wishing to be heard? All right, as there are none.
You want to invite the applicant up for rebuttal?
Yeah, if our applicant would like to come up and answer to any of those questions that were brought up by the public. And again, if you could just state your name, once you've seated.
Lyle Hutchins. I think very simply
I think very simply will second the comments that Blair just made with respect to cul-de-sacs, hammerheads and storm drainage also is. The design process for a storm drainage master plan, which is what these developments will require, is not a mystery. It is a typical engineering effort and will certainly be presented to the city for review. And one other thing, just to reiterate, the street cross-sections that we have proposed are consistent with the municipal code requirements for a local street.
Anybody else have any questions for our applicant?
I'll go ahead and just, just ask about fire breaks and wildfire safety along that forested area because that is, it's a valid concern considering the climate that we live in now.
We agree. At this point, I think the, the best way to say we are certainly willing to work with the fire department and whatever other agencies may have interest in that in order to protect the future development of that property. So I think it, it'll, it'll happen during the actual design process as we're coordinating with the fire department.
Thank you.
Anybody else have anything? All right, I'm not writing as fast as I'm thinking. All right, thank you so much.
Thank you.
So at this time, we're going to close the public hearing for a discussion amongst the planning commission at eight oh one.
What kind of building code, do we have any building code right now that would require fire breaks or that would just be defensible space?
There, we don't have any, I, I think there's some, there's some code language. It's not usually called into place at this time, but I mean, and there are a number of efforts that are being made to, to ensure that there are fire breaks and, and especially that the wildland urban, they refer to it as the urban wildland interface is, is safe. And obviously it's, it's, it's not something you can completely eliminate because we've been continually surprised by fires in our area. But it is something that's of great concern. I know that the fire district has been pursuing some grants and some other programs to increase the number of fire breaks that are both within city limits, but also outside the city. And so we, we try to cooperate with them as much as we can. And then when it comes to just the development of these properties, we would be looking to ensure that, you know, encourage that the land that is under control have adequate space as much as, as is possible between the edge of the forest and, and any structures.
You had said in the past too, that that property on the south side of the urban growth boundary that we're talking about is CTC land, so.
That's, that's, yeah. And the, and CTC has been very cooperative with the city. All of the timber companies in our area have been extremely cooperative with the city and the fire district. And so, and in fact, we, I mean, they're frankly, back in 2020, I, I credit them with, with keeping the fires away from the city that happened then. Because if it wasn't for those private firefighters that were protecting CTC's inventory, we'd be in a much different situation.
Is it unprecedented to think about looking at requiring some kind of a fire break even as part of phase one that encompasses the entirety of the property?
That's a good question. I don't know. We, it, it's an area where I haven't had the time to, to put into research. But it is something that I have heard about from other jurisdictions in the state of, of things that people are contemplating. I don't know what the best practices are currently, but that's something that, that we could research and bring back to you.
I'm just thinking of the possibility of just ringing the entire project prior to major construction, just to create the fire break in the beginning.
It's difficult because you're also talking about property that's not within the applicant's control and that includes.
Oh, not, not the CTC land.
Sure.
I'm talking just on the proposed property.
Oh, well, typically, typically during development, you have a lot of clearing anyway because there's a lot of grading that needs to be done as part of the
Right, I'm, I'm in phase four being, the fire break being installed during phase one. So not, not the development out there, but just going around the property's edge. And creating a lane, if you will.
So, part of that is, is the reason why they're, one of the reasons why they're phasing this is because during phase one, phase one has no wetlands on it. So they're going ahead with phase one. So phase two, three and four will take more time. So they can't just go and do the, they can't just go and mow a fire because they have to wait until they get clearing from DSL and from the Army Corps. So, which is why they're doing this in the phase that they're doing this. And so they can't just go and mow all that down and create a fire break because that, they've got to wait until, make sure. There could be a chance because of wetland issues that they may have to redesign this, that happened over here at Dakalau. So they actually, we approved that one, that we had to actually continue it because once they came back, they said, no, we're going to have to have you do this. They had to do some mitigation. This could be a potential that happens here, which is why they wouldn't be able to do that until later phases.
And I will add that most of, all of the efforts that I've been privy to with, with the fire district and, and efforts has been focused on, on fire breaks within forests rather than grasslands. And so I don't think that they even are looking at that as, as something to, to focus on. But that's something that we'll, we'll have to ask the fire chief next time I talk to him.
I think a lot of good things were brought up by the public tonight. So some of which we have control over and some of which we don't. I think some of them I've already addressed.
Yeah, we did address the Forty-Fifth Avenue because the property owner doesn't have, they don't have that property. So the Forty-Fifth Avenue is not part of like improvement, but Forty-Sixth Avenue will be improved, Forty-third Avenue will be improved with the project.
Yeah, the way this is designed, it's not contemplated that this would be, it, it's not intentionally putting any traffic toward Forty-Fifth. I think there's not room for that. So everything, the traffic impact study will be based on the actual connection points that are within their control as part of this development. And that would not be really an option.
Just addressing the issue that was brought up about collection ponds being an attractive nuisance. I do remember that hearing way back when and the issue there was property ownership. And really we had no jurisdiction over that because it was owned by the homeowners association.
Right, and so.
Responsible for that.
Yeah, when it comes to those, those, that section of the code, chapter eight point zero four, that's the code compliance stuff. It, it's really dealing with, with individual property owners taking care of their properties. And so really for anyone, if you, you know, have a, a big property and you have a swimming pool in your backyard and you make no effort to, to keep, to fence your yard, then, then yeah, that's an attractive nuisance and, and you could be held liable for that. Now, you could be held liable for it without the city doing anything at all, just by somebody suing you over it. That's, that's an area of law that's very likely. So it, it's in property owner's interest to ensure that potential dangers like that are fenced adequately or designed in such a way that they, that they are not a, a serious danger. So that would be for the, whoever has control of that property, like an HOA, to, or the, the original developer to address first. If the city has to step in, it's going to be on the side of, of, you know, enforcement of, of city rules. And, and that would cost the property owner to, to get those done. But it's not, it's not something that the city has control over. It's more something that we have to beat people with after the fact.
One other thing I have really quick is I love the idea of the little mini park in there. I would just love to see the word potential removed from it. So, I mean, there's area for interpretation there.
If I may, the, as I mentioned, the, the parks master plan is not complete yet.
Right.
And this is an area where we want to have parks. However, I, I, speaking for, from, for city staff and from the, the, the parking tree committee and their comments that they've made, we are looking for a full neighborhood park in this area that is what we would be looking for. There are certainly possibilities with that and we, we look forward to, to talking more with the, the property owner. What we have discussed before is that currently the mechanism we have is that the city doesn't have a requirement for dedicating property, but we do have system development charges that can be collected from development and then used for acquisition of park property. And those same fees can also be used as a credit for, for those who do contribute that, those, that land or, or completed park infrastructure to the city. So we would continue to work with the, with the applicant on, through those mechanisms. And determining the, the exact location of where that should be is, there's a lot of factors to, to be considered. And so it could be that some, that that is just the right spot, but we simply haven't done, we, we don't have our, our plans in place enough to be able to say that that's definitely the right location for a city park. But we, we definitely would love to have one in the area.
I have one more question about the lot size. We, did we recently establish a new minimum lot size or when was it established?
In twenty twenty-two, when the new code, the, the minimum lot size did change from eight thousand square feet to seven thousand square feet. And so that is a, a recent change statewide, again, with the lack of housing and the, the need for more housing. That is a general trend that it's assumed that if it's within city limits already, that that's the appropriate place for denser housing development to be. And that outside city limits is more appropriate for those farms, larger, larger lots that are large natural resource type lands and things like that.
And on the, now I can't remember the name of the plan, but on the overall city plan, looking towards the future, Long Street. Yes, the comprehensive plan, that's the word. Long Street is, is considered an arterial road looking forward.
The transportation system.
Like it'd be Main Street and Long Street would be the main roads going through Sweet Home as it grows.
Right, so the transportation system plan is a, is a part of the comprehensive plan. It's, 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 it's an annex of it basically. And that identifies what the street classifications are of all the, the streets in Sweet Home. Long Street, Main Street, Highway twenty is a, is a major arterial. Long Street is a minor arterial. Those are the two most important streets. Now, it is a little bit odd that once, the way the current plan is designed, once Long Street hits airport or hits Forty-Fifth, the Forty-Fifth that goes up to airport, is that Forty-third?
Forty.
Forty-nine, no, Forty-Ninth is at the very end. Let me pull up the map.
Keeps going back.
Sorry, I get the forties mixed up. I'll tell you in just.
Getting into the other subdivision.
At the four-way stop.
Yeah, it's at.
Right before.
And the street's not showing up. Anyway, when it hits to, when it hits about Forty-second and Forty-third is where it jogs up to airport and then goes over to Forty-Ninth. That's the path that the minor arterial follows. And so beyond that, Long Street is not technically that minor arterial. However, it is, it is still a major, a major street that, and that connection is extremely important. So the fact of the matter is people who are exiting out of this subdivision are going to head to Long Street and take that over to west to, to connect to most of the shopping areas in the city and the schools and so forth. Anyone who's going east is, is going to basically head over to Forty-Ninth and then, and then up to, to Main. So it, it's a little more complicated than that, but that's the gist of it.
Thank you.
Any discussion questions or questions for staff? All right, so we've heard a bunch of testimony from the public in regards to some things and that have been addressed and other things that we will potentially steer toward other organizations or departments to make sure that they are addressed. A lot of them will be discussed in the permitting process as far as street structure, overall design of the storm retention areas to meet current code, both set for by Sweet Home and the state, which our hands are tied with. So if there's no further discussion based on the evidence that we've been given tonight.
I was just going to let you know also, they brought up the public works comments from Blake, it's Blake Patterson. So he is our new public works engineering tech. Yeah, so you remember Trish Rice used to be in that position. He has taken Trish Rice's place, so hasn't been in here yet. So I just wanted to bring up the fact that he is staff, so.
Okay. The questions and comments will be directed toward the correct individuals. So there's no further discussion, we would look for a motion to approve or a motion to deny. Application SD twenty.
I'll go ahead and make the motion. I would move to approve application SD twenty-three dash zero one, including the conditions of approval listed in section four of the staff report, adopting the findings of facts listed in section three of the staff report, the setting of the twelve-day appeal period from the date of the mailing of the decision and thereby hereby directing staff to prepare in order to be signed by the chair to memorialize this decision.
All right.
I would second that motion.
All right, we have a motion and a second to approve application SD twenty-three oh one. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? All right, motion passes. And at this point, if anyone has any concerns or comments that can either be directed toward Blair or toward the city council, that would be the place to do so. Again, we address certain things that are representative for us and in our guidelines, what we can and cannot look at. And that's what we have done tonight. And honestly, side note from everything, this is probably one of the best subdivision layouts I've seen in a long time as far as the way it blends into the neighboring community with limited numbers of streets and not just dumping them all out like a bunch of Legos. So.
Will everyone who provided testimony and left their address, will they receive a copy of the notice of decision in the mail?
Yes. All right. So that concludes most of our public hearing. Go over to staff and any updates on upcoming business or processes ahead of us.
What have we got coming up? Any applications that we've had recently? Diane, do you, do you know of any that are likely to come forward to the planning commission?
There's been some talked about, but nothing finished yet, so I will keep you posted.
Things in general have been fairly well with some, winter time is always a little bit quiet when it comes to building and planning activity. And then as things warm up, suddenly people decide they want to build things. And, and so we're seeing a little uptick in, in some of the applications, but mostly smaller things like property line adjustments and things like that. Not a lot to really report on, except we're still moving forward with our transportation system plan. We are looking at the, the projection right now is that that would probably not be fully adopted until, until October probably. But coming up on, in, in May, we will have some additional meetings for the, the public advisory committee that's associated with.
public advisory committee that's associated with that. And so that's moving forward. We also are getting our Parks Master Plan is, is moving forward as well. That's scheduled to go before the city council on April, no, May fourteenth. And staff has started meeting with some consultants regarding our housing production strategy. That is the, the next required state document after the housing needs analysis that we adopted. And so it's, it's been kind of interesting talking with the consultants about different ways to encourage more housing and, and things that they're finding that we might want to look at. Nothing really definitive so far, but we did have some discussion at the city council level talking about accessory dwelling units, because we did have a gentleman seeking to build one. And his main concern was actually the, the system development charges and our requirement that separate dwelling units have their own utility connections. And as he was, he felt that he, he wanted to use the, the house's existing connection. But the way our code is written, not the development code, but our, our more public works facing code. It's pretty firm that when it comes to sewer connections, you have to have, each dwelling unit needs to have their own. And there's a very narrow exemption for certain properties when there's not enough room to get past the house to the street. There is, there is a way to do that. However, it often requires upsizing the, the, the main line from the house. So there's a few things. It's, it's not a simple matter. It's mostly looking at what's appropriate. But it's nice to see that at least some interest in, in accessory dwelling units and some of our code has, changes have helped with that.
After it gets approved in October, could we see any? I mean, other than it's passed, is there any other result of it? Will there be?
Uh, yeah, I, well, i- it's a plan. So that's, that's the thing that's frustrating. People always want to see stuff in the, in, still in the ground.
How would that potential, what, what would be the first step of implementation?
Sure, sure. So first off, you'll see it before it gets to that point, because, because it is adopted as a land, it, it is connected with land use. And, and it would be adopted as a, as a appendix to the comprehensive plan. So there will be a public hearing in front of, of you all for that, and then it'll go to the city council for final adoption. But the, the, the way it's supposed to work is you, you have a plan that looks at both current usage levels, current needs, current problems. And then it projects into the future to look at the next 20 years of growth. And what are the pressure points in the system going to be there? And it identifies improvements to the overall system that are needed to meet.
The budget.
Yeah, to meet that demand. Well, what, what happens is those projects are then identified and there's a capital improvements list that's part of the plan. That then gets adopted by resolution as part of our SDC projects. And it gets it on the overall capital improvement plan for the city. And so that opens it up to funding from SDCs. But it also, because it's been formally adopted and had that public review, it also makes it more, more of a a, a better case for various grants and other funding opportunities to try and get more, more money for that.
That would open up more streets for improvements.
Yeah, it'll, I mean, it'll mostly be focused on, you know, what, what are the needs? So what, what kind of street improvements are we gonna see out of that? It's gonna be looking mainly at the main corridors that affect everyone in the city. But it's also gonna be looking at things like sidewalks and pedestrian safety and bicycle safety and things like that. So it's, it's not an easy thing to improve all that at once, but it'll, it'll start with the highest priority areas and then go out from there. But it's all gonna be funding dependent.
So you always know this better than I will. What is Sweet Home's kind of philosophy on utilities under sidewalks versus utilities under streets? I'm just thinking as this goes forward, and you know, we've heard questions and issues with this section of Long Street over several different applications.
Yeah.
With that drainage ditch, it just seems primed to maybe take it a little lower based on other utilities. Throw in stormwater collection systems and then put the sidewalk right on top of it.
I mean, that's the way it's gonna, that's, that's the way it's eventually gonna be.
Yeah.
Because you only have so much room within the right of way. And with roadside, the only way you're gonna get a reasonable sidewalk on that street is by putting it over the, over the ditch. You know, there's nowhere else to stick it. So, so yeah, that's gonna be eventually, the, the projects are gonna need to be getting the right size pipe, storm, storm pipe underneath at the right slope so that you won't have to touch it for a very, very long time.
Right, yeah.
And then, and then filling over the top and putting the sidewalk right on top of it.
It just seems like that one's come up so frequently based on either other conditional use permits that are problems with it. Some divisions that are feeding into it.
Right, yeah, Public Works talks about this all the time and.
Yeah, and just the benefits that would come from either, even just that short section.
Right.
Of Long Street.
Yeah, I mean, you can, you can do quite a bit just by digging some ditches, but the problem is, is eventually you get to something that has a pipe that's hard to move.
Or the ditches fill in and then.
Exactly. So the storm pipe is, is much more efficient than the dishes because usually you don't have to, doesn't get filled in.
Arterial goes up long and then over to Airport and up. This to people that were worried about the storm drain here, that doesn't address that because all of a sudden the end of long isn't an arterial anymore.
But the storm water isn't gonna be affected by whether it's an arterial or not.
It's just.
As far as filling the end with.
No, 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 I'm saying that, that you, you don't have to be an arterial for that. That's just a street thing.
We just have to identify in the traffic impact study that it.
Well, yeah, the, the, the transportation impact study is going to include not only the vehicle trips, but it's gonna include pedestrian connectivity and that kind of thing. So that's, and that's what we, exactly. So it's, it's a, it's a difficult thing to push forward because so much of that is already developed. And, and so the way our code is written, it's the corner, it starts that, that, that improvement starts at the corners and goes out of every intersection and goes out from there. And so if all your corners are already developed, it, it kind of puts a crimp in your, in the plan. So.
There's not much bicycle or pedestrian traffic on the end of Long Street because there's no place to walk or ride.
Right.
Well, and that's the thing, you'll find it's, it's one of those, if you build it, they will come kind of thing.
Killing two birds with one stone, but you're gonna get more like five birds of.
Sure, I, I, knowing enough people who are really into cycling. Long Street, if, if Long Street had bike lanes the entire way, or at least sidewalk the entire way, there would be a ton of people. Probably see more runners too, because it's a nice, long, straight street that you could, you could run for miles without having to turn.
Yeah.
Mind if I ask what's going on at the old Sweet Home mill site?
If I know, all I know is, I know the owner has plans and things that he wants to do. Yeah, some of those, some of those old warehouse kind of buildings, he's, they've done a lot of work on them. One of them, the one that sags a little bit more is gonna come down. Is what I was told, if it hasn't come down already. But the other one is in really good shape and he's made some upgrades and he's got some ideas for, for using it for essentially like, you know, concert venues and stuff like that. I, I know his goal is eventually to, eventually to host the jamboree and other stuff on the property.
So, yeah, right now he's, well, I don't know about the buildings, but he's preparing for Tune It Up Tuesdays. That doesn't start until June.
Yeah, they did do one down there, didn't they?
Yeah, but they did, Tune It Up Tuesdays, and then they are, according to the paperwork I have, they're gonna be doing a jamboree or doing like parking. And they'll be doing a lot of the different side activities there.
Bunch of good things from the Tune It Up Tuesday that they had down there. They put the straw down just to kind of give it the feel, but the vendors were in the dry and not in the mud and.
Yeah.
So that's right now, I know, I know that's what he's using it for in June.
It's my understanding they're doing music and brews in May.
Yeah.
Door. Oh, that's right, that's the other one.
Yeah, and that's, and that's gonna be inside that.
So that'll be coming up soon.
So he's, they've, he's done a lot of stuff. It's, frankly, I'm, I'm, I've been impressed. It's not what I thought would have.
Cut me off guard yesterday. We were at McDonald's. Wow. They're rebuilding that building.
Yeah.
And, yeah, they have done a lot.
Yeah, so, and, and he and I have talked about the need for the street, for 24th to connect through there, and he wants that to happen. It's mainly just getting to the time where we can sit down and actually lay out the, the way the street needs to go.
So that's a civil act and, and leading origin of the city.
Exactly, and, but he's got a bunch of the parts of the land there that have a, a methane mitigation plan associated with it. So that has to be taken into account. The, the more he leaves uncapped, the better. Because anything that comes up can escape, but when you build something on top of, of ground that methane is coming out of, even if it's a very small amount of methane, it eventually collects in one spot. That's a bad thing. So there are various methods to collect that and vent it out. And so that'll make construction slightly more difficult, but not, not hugely. It's one of those things where you just have to plan for it and do it while you're building.
We have a new commissioner.
Oh, yeah. I know we had a couple of applicants and I don't know when, I don't know when they're scheduled for interviews. But we have, I know we have two applicants.
And we need.
One of whom you probably know.
Volunteer location.
Sounds like, yeah, city council.
Well, and to be, to be fair, I think those two applicants were just in the last couple of weeks. So I, it didn't, for all I know, they might have met already. I don't, I haven't heard.
And are those just for a quick note, are those inside city limits or at large?
The seat is, is available for anybody outside city limits. When it comes, and I think one of our applicants is outside city limits and the other might be inside, but I don't recall.
All right. Sure. All right, if there's no other business.
Oh, I am usually gone in April, just FYI, so. But I can zoom in if we need to.
Oh, sorry, I was going to actually update. I was just looking at the calendar of the deadlines. Sorry, you caught me off guard. April days. So I was just double checking. I have not received any finished applications before the deadline, so there will be no meetings in April, potentially in May. So I will keep you posted. And so commissioner Mal, Maltr, you have nothing to worry about. Thanks.
All right, with no further business, we'll close the planning commission meeting for March 21st, 2024 at eight thirty two.
Typically do is give them to them before the meeting starts. That's what that red folder was.
Just so you know, all of your concerns and stuff, I do make notes and pass them on to make sure that each person gets them, that they're addressed. And I think, I think some of your stuff's gonna be dealt with. Just, it seems like the developers really.